Okay, call this meeting to order. Let the record show that all submissions are present. Please stand for the vote of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just for the record, that wasn't mine.
You know, I apologize. I apologize.
The money goes also.
Okay, any discussion? Any copies?
Good morning.
Morning. Minutes?
Yeah, we had minutes.
Okay.
We did.
Yeah.
Most of them approved.
Okay. There's a motion and a second approval of minutes. Any discussion, correction? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Nobody. Five zero. Thank you. Okay, next we have one. Anybody else want to fill out the form for citizens' comments? We have David Berg?
Bergy.
Bergy, I'm sorry.
All right.
Uh, he wants to speak on the Valverde County Library and landscape. Go ahead.
Oh, you want to go first? Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, you're the only one.
Okay, great, great. Excuse me, Karen. Yes, I can say my name is David Bergy. I live at 1309 South Main Street. I'm a retired engineer. And I sent a letter to our librarian, Maria Monday, and concerning the big oak tree in front of our library. About a year ago, the one of the limbs was cut, and it wasn't cut properly. About a two-foot stub was left. And that's not good for oak trees. Plus aesthetically, it doesn't look very good. Here, in my letter to the librarian, I said, yeah, I said librarian Monday, right. Here, I circled a section of the paper that features the pruned oak tree in front of our newly renovated Valverde Library. And let me show you that. Right here. The highlighted section there, so you can see what I'm talking about.
You bought it, haven't you?
Oh, yeah, you know, gotta be prepared, you know?
Okay.
And, um, let's see. And I did this, you know, I'm continuing my email to the librarian. I did this to point out that the limb cut from the oak tree was not trimmed properly, both from an aesthetic view and also from a tree limb growth aspect. Simply, the limb should have been cut just above the branch collar and the ridge with the main tree trunk. And then, I've included some literature for her to review, but anyway, it's about tree type. Um, I go on to say that if the contractor won't do the work properly to cut this tree, then I'm willing to pay to have it done. You know, of course, I'm sure there's a process for doing that. Um, let's see, a job like this would probably cost about $150. That's no problem. Let's see. Finally, I said that if the library contractor does do this trim job, he needs to seal the wound, because this is a live oak. And live oaks are susceptible to oak rot, and that can really do a lot of damage to a beautiful, big oak tree like this. Um, and finally, I say that this may seem like a minor thing, a trivial thing, but having an attitude of overall excellence should go with every aspect of our newly renovated and expanded library. And that pretty much concludes my presentation. I know I have three minutes.
You don't need to use them if you don't need them.
Uh, here's the response that I got from librarian Monday. She said, David, I received your letter today, and I very much appreciate your concern about our oak tree. Your offer is a generous one. I would love nothing more than to say, let's do it. But in order for me to do that, however, I need to require me going before the grants committee for permission to accept the gift, and then going to the commissioners for getting their approval. As I am preparing to leave this week on the much-needed vacation, I'm going to ask you if you would be willing to handle the matter as it is much easier for a private citizen to appear before the court. If you didn't show up at the court, let's see, April 10th today, this morning, sign up as a citizen and be heard. After hearing your presentation, the court may very well decide to include a proper crony of a tree in the landscape work that has yet to be completed and only very recently has been sent out for bids. Um, and then, she mentioned some other material here about articles that I sent. So that's it. That's my presentation, and thank you for your consideration and, um...
David, I appreciate that. I used to live in the house there, and my mother planted that tree.
Oh, okay, it's about 100 years old.
Yeah, it's 100 years old.
Yeah.
No, it's 50 something years old.
Oh, okay, okay. It's a beautiful tree, and I think it needs to be preserved.
I agree.
If you look at the picture there, that two-foot stub is just, you know, it's a nice oak. But, you know, it's cutting, also, you don't want to cut it flush. You want to cut it maybe about two or three inches above the collar ridge. Right about there. The next one, article.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, yes, sir. You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me, thank you.
Which one deals with the landscape? Thirty-seven?
Yeah.
Let's just do that, now we're going to leave.
Okay. Let's address item 37, we'll address, let's go to item 37, discuss post-action required quotes received for landscaping for the Valverde County Library.
Judge, on this, I think y'all got quotes.
Yeah.
Do we get numbers?
Oh, they're coming in.
We haven't got them yet.
Okay.
Oh, I think they just got another call.
We'd set up, we'd set up a group to look at them.
No, that's what the judge is going to do.
Okay. Uh, I'd like to make a motion. I mean, Roy, since you're part of it already, Roy, the judge, and Commissioner Middleton, since this is what he does, to look at the bids, review them, come up with, uh, come up with a name, and just go ahead and give them authority to take, for that committee to take care of the whole process. You don't need to come back to the court, just, let's just go ahead and get it done. And I think one of the issues, we can address this limb or whatever.
Correct.
With Commissioner Middleton being there, since this is what, this is, this company does this.
Okay. Okay, there's a motion, I need a second.
Second. I'd like to see, I'd like to see a committee, I mean, a private citizen, sit on this committee, Judge.
Okay.
Who do you want?
Hey, citizen?
Who do you want?
Okay.
Well, let's do this. It's, uh, you had a name right there. If she accepts it.
If she accepts it. Okay, why don't we just put this, a committee of us three and a citizen, and then we'll decide?
And let y'all three decide on a citizen, that's part of a motion.
Second, except, yeah, and this process will also address that, that fee there, okay? But we're going out, bids on that, not for bids, quotes on this, okay?
And hopefully, in the future, people that work for the county will actually be comfortable coming before us, because it's really not that bad of a deal.
Okay. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody. Five zero. Thank you. All right. Let's go to item number six, progress report on DEA grant, Laughlin Westgate. Go ahead.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioner, it's court. Um, let's see. It's, it's moving quite well. Progress continues every, every, every day. Uh, our list is the tasks that were completed, that the light, light poles are already put up on the, on the exterior, on the outside, in the parking area, the roof flashing, the panels completed, the power is to the transfer switch, they're, they're getting ready to finish the inside, so they can move it to the breakers and test the entire building for electricity. Um, concrete paving on the south side is done, and drywall is finished on the inside. There's still mill work, the final inspection on the roof, electrical and communication roughing is still going on, and they're going to start today, in fact, the roadway parking lot grading and pavings. Um, and the, the, the permanent power should be installed by August the 4th.
August or April?
April.
I'm sorry, April. August would be a little late.
Yeah.
Concerns, there's some testing on the roof, but they're being addressed by the engineers, the contractor, and local enforcement base staff. DOT visited, or attended the meeting we had last week, and they had some concerns on the, the queuing of the trucks at the front gates. Um, there's some design that took that into consideration. That was explained to them. Their other concern was traffic flow. They, I believe last week, they closed down the 90 entrance for some repairs, so therefore, they got a pretty good look at what the traffic should look like at the west gate, and it extended to Loop 79. So, um...
Wow.
Laughlin's also looking into it to, to see if they can modify their, their scheduling. Other than that, uh...
You know, just let me add a little bit to it. The governor's office did send a representative, Keith Craft, and he was very impressed with the project, he knew ahead of time, unscheduled, and so he says, what do we do to get it on schedule, because most governor contacts are not on schedule, so I said, I don't know what we did, we worked hard on it, so, anyway. Okay. Okay. Any comments on it? Any questions? Then I just go to item seven, discuss post-action on the Valverde County date in Austin. And on this one here, all I can say is that it will be on Wednesday, and basically, what we're lobbying for is the four-lane highway to Uvalde. And I was talking to Commissioner Middleton, and I think what we have to do is team up with Uvalde and us to see how we can help Kenny County, because they're trying to take the buck of, of the money, see how we can team up, because they don't have any money for a four-lane highway, and I think that's the issue right there. So we'll talk about that. We're also going to be talking about, there's a bill that will, uh, have a 30 nautical mile from the center of runway, will not allow any wind farms to be developed in all cities in Texas, because the wind farms really encroach on military basis. I think this one is basically, we haven't had it here, we don't want to have it, but basically, Kingsville and Fort Worth are having a problem with it, so we're going to try to help them out on that. And other than that, that's about it that we're going to be working on. Okay?
Judge, do we have something on mental health?
Yeah, we're going to lobby for more money for mental health, but that will come in, in, I think, Poncho will be taking the lead on that.
Okay.
Okay? All right, any more?
Judge, I, I got a question. Wouldn't, I mean, last week I had a phone call from Roland, that it would be, I'm just now hearing about the date, right now. So I mean, did we know about it? I mean, did I miss an email or something?
Yeah, there was an email. It was an email on it. And then we set, uh, last...
Week before, or less, like, early last week or week before.
Was this date already?
Yeah. And I think what we, what we set on Thursday was set the agenda that we were going to lobby for. I set with Henry and the new assistant city manager, Ms. Martinez, I don't know her first name, but we set, and we did a rough draft of, of that, uh, items we were going to lobby for, at the same time we should get the complete, the, uh, the, the draft already, after we included, we included the hospital and the school, so we worked on, on the county and the city, now, they were going to go to the hospital and the, and the school, and so we should have the final draft today. Okay? Any other question?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, next, item eight.
We're going to take, we're going to take item 37.
Okay. All right, next, we have item nine, discuss post-action on application for payment, number 22 from JP Sanchez Construction, Duffin Incorporated for the Valverde County Expansion Project.
We still have, even after this draw, we still have, I'm just, $434,101, is that correct?
We're still holding his retain.
Yeah, that's it.
That's his retain.
That's his retainage. The retainage is 390, 182, and then we have construct, uh, construction costs remaining of about $43,000. The only, and I just texted him right now, I was texting Eddie, before we get, or release the rest of that money, there were some issues on carpet.
Yeah.
That needed to be replaced, and he said that they, they had it ordered, and then there was an issue on some books that were ruined, uh, that, that also, I just, like, I just texted him right now, that we really need to take care of that before we go back after any of that money.
Yeah, with the, that 434,000 that's remaining, majority of that is retainage, that won't be released until all the concerned are taken.
Well, I'm just saying right now, and just for the record, we had two issues that, you know, I think they've addressed everything and sort of really come along and got everything done, but there's two issues that need to be addressed.
I think that last question...
That's the punch list.
Right. That's also what we meant, we told them we weren't going to consider the, the, the release of the retainage until they finish, complete project, so...
What is it? Go ahead.
Oh, go on.
What does that leave us in this budget?
As far as, uh...
Overall?
Overall, we got about, there's around $330,000 left.
That's after furniture and everything?
No. There's about $330,000 left that's not obligated.
But that, that 330 is after all the furniture and everything, that we're going to buy a computer, everything.
That's correct. Yeah. So we got, we got a little cushion there.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, I need a second. Second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody. Five zero. Thank you, Paul. Next, discuss post-action on certification to extension completion date, March 24th, by Duberry Architects Incorporated for the Valverde County Library Expansion Project, unauthorized by county judge to sign.
David, this is a substantial completion, but did we change the terms of the contract? Because the original terms of the contract, substantial completion and completion was the same thing.
They gave them three more weeks, if I'm not mistaken.
Three more weeks. Do we need to amend the contract?
I think you extended the, the terms are still the same, you just extended the time, right?
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah, the terms are still the same.
Yeah. The substantial completion and completion in the, in the original contract, or in the contract, were the same date, and all we did was extend the time, or all the committee did was extend the time between substantial completion and completion.
But no changes were made, other than granting the extension?
An extension.
The thing I'm asking, though, is do we, do we need to change their contract? Because if we approve this as substantial completion, and in the terms of their existing contract, that means the job is done. Do we have anything that says there's a difference? Do we put anything in writing that says there's a difference?
Not at all.
That's the only issue. If you approve this, then substantial completion in accordance with their contract means they're done.
But I think that that's, um, that was what the discussions were in the, with the committee, and we're just going to interpret it to be substantial completion for this, for this period of time only.
I just don't want to come back and say we're finished, we're not doing anything.
Well, they've actually, on their punch list, they've already gone through most of their punch list anyway, and they're, I mean, I, I think they're done.
Couple of items.
Yeah, there's very few items. One of the deals is...
I guess the only thing that, I want to bring it to everyone's attention, that this date of the substantial completion will be the date of one or two starts, one year warranty.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion, need a second? Second? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody. Five zero. Thank you, Paul. All right, next, we have Repita Galindo, Chairman of the Valverde County Welfare Board, submitting names of Crystal Locust and Karen Dunn, let's fulfill the vacancies of Valverde County Child Welfare.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Five zero. Thank you. All right, next, we have Cesare Gavero, Program Director for New Horizon Center, and at which program presentation activity and profits and loss report for January to February 2017.
I think you all received.
Yeah, yeah, we should, we should.
Viagra.
Okay. Just activities report.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. We're cutting a lot, we're extending a lot.
I'm understanding y'all are working on some grants.
Yes, um, we're working on Medicaid, Medicaid grant and the United Way Foundation grant right now. And I went and spoke with Mr. Jason and Carmen Gilson, and from the arrest office, and Mr. Salinas with the Nevada's office in Austin, on the 21st, and they basically asked for the county to go and address that during the county date that they have.
How much are those grants? Each one of those grants?
No, uh, the discussion is for the HCC funding.
How much are the grants that you're applying for?
I'm not sure how much we're going to apply for. We usually get about $10,000 from the United Way. It's not that much, and from the other one, we're going to try to get as much as we can.
Mr. Sotelo, and I may be mistaken, but I thought you said like a hundred thousand or something like that, but I don't remember.
Yeah, but, I mean, the, the amount that we put in there is basically on whatever they can give us. And I was looking at the agenda that you have, the visit to Austin on the 12th, and I think Mr. Sotelo spoke with Mr. Middleton, asking or requesting for him to be invited to that, so he can speak on the, on the, on the issue and the need for the community. And basically, what we're asking is for a budget expansion for shelters, but not only shelters, for new shelters, and to set an amount, a specific amount, for rural communities, so we can apply for those funds.
Because the current funding is only for existing facilities, okay?
Yes, and the last expansion that they did, they, they expanded to new, I mean, to current facilities, so...
Well, I, I was not sure, but he is invited present.
Okay, okay.
Who started at 8:00?
At 8:00.
At Poncho Navarre's office.
Okay.
And from there, we'll separate different things.
Okay, and, um, on the question that you had before about the percentage that Mr. Sotelo is obtaining from his salary is 36%, and Mr. Mendoza is obtaining 60% of his salary through the shelter. And, um, the profit and loss is, has accounting fees added to these ones, but in the next one, it's not going to have accounting fees charges to it, so we're trying to get as much as we can.
Thank you.
Any questions for Maria Gavero?
Thank you.
Taken away. All right, next, we have discussed post-action on Texas CDBG grant number 7216075, opponent statement, modification, requesting to extend the water lines of Vega Valley Road and authorize county judge to sign it and submit it to Texas Department of Land and Culture.
Motion to approve, and now the judge sign.
Okay.
And motion second. Okay, any questions for Paul? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody. Five zero. All right, next, item 14, discuss post-action on Texas CDBG grant 7216075, early flood plain notice and publishing notice one time required by the Texas CDBG guidelines.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody. Five zero. Next, item 15, discuss post-action on approximation for April 2017 for S. Fairhaven Month for the Valverde County.
Okay.
Second. Any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody. Five zero. Item 16, discuss post-action regarding payment requested by Duberry Engineering for additional work from January 1st of 2017. I think he's not a top man in that one, I'd already distributed data to us.
I'm sure I asked him too.
Did you? Little detail. Thank you, guys.
It's not 70, is it?
No.
Took over from $76,000 to $98,000.
Correct. Says for about 12.
Yeah, 38, asking for additional $38,000. And they did do some extra work.
And we do that with money.
Right? Motion to approve.
The motion a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Just the 38, just, yeah, I was fixing, motion approved with 38, I don't know, they're going to serve.
Okay. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. All those opposed? Nobody. Thank you. All right, next, item 17, discuss post-action on replacing and ordering two existing bronze plaques 18 by 18 for Valverde County from T. H. Willis and Company at a cost of $1,556 delivered.
What does that for? What does it say?
It was brought to attention there that there's, at one of the meetings we had a couple of weeks ago, there's a plaque, it used to be on the outside of the building when the old part of the library was built some years ago, and, uh, anyhow, it has a, has some historical value to that, and so the county asked JP Sanchez if they could remove that. It's a bronze plaque. They said in process of maybe doing that, they could destroy it, be hard, it's embedded into the brick wall. Used to be wrapped on the outside of the corner. So now no one's going to see that plaque, it has a lot of historical value, has some people's names on it. So the thought was maybe to order that same sort of plaque and put it inside the building somewhere where people could see it, right now it's back there and kind of administrate it for them.
There's two plaques, is there?
Yeah, and then the other one there, I took a picture of both of them. Another one, there's, there's a plaque in there, it's just kind of laying over there, pretty small, and it was from back in there in 19, uh, back in the 60s, and some folks there that, in the community, that actually contributed and donated to...
So we're just going to replicate, replicate the names?
Yeah.
And what are we doing for the plaque, a new plaque for this building?
Well, what I did, uh, contacted, the reason I mentioned this to the, we had our monthly or weekly meeting, I just ordered a plaque from another county from Mr. Willis, it was a, uh, put on a rescuing project that we did with community development, rock, and things. And so they're in the business for that. Anyhow, contacted them, they're on the land passes, and he sent the county a quote for those two plaques. That'd be a thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the two plaques. They'd be 18 by 18.
Uh-huh. But these are for those two plaques, other, the other plaque, I mean, usually when there's a new building, there's a plaque put on it, that's dark.
Yeah, we're not, that's not been addressed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we need to add that.
Yeah, could you be in a...
It means it is to replace those two existing ones.
We need to add the other. Make a motion to approve, take it out of the bond money, and to add the other, get the price and add the other plaque, remain for the new building.
Okay, you might, they want to get with the committee and see what they want on it.
Okay. Okay, a motion, I need a second. Second? Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, thank you. Next, item, discuss possible action on matters regarding Texas CDBG 713125, Colonia Construction Fund, Vancho Del Rio Waterline Project and Escondido Water Plant, 2 in 2, change order number 2. As the certificate of construction completion, pay estimate application number 10, and finally, TTE LLC, construction completion for the force account, force account, construction personnel timesheet and authorize the county judge to sign it.
This is our paperwork here, administrative work. I may add that we had the final inspection out there on March 29th at the water tank side with the contractors. And it went really well. Everything out there is really top notch, good shape. Mr. Russ called five loads of water out there. We actually got to test the plant. The AEP, tied in the electrical a few days before that, so we actually were able to do a startup on the plant out there. Everything went good, and so this is just administrative process, closing it out. Way back there on the change order, way back there, when they were doing the bores, the city requested that there be some restraining joints added to the bores that are tied together. And so that was not original plan, I was not in a design, something that's generally not done. But the city requested that, so it went ahead and incorporated that. And the contractor was actually requesting that payment for that and worked up a change order. About $6,000, we actually have money in the grant to pay for that, so it won't be any additional cost to the county on that with his incorporating into his final payment. And his one year warranty starts from March 29th, 2017.
I make a motion, that be approved?
Sure.
There's a motion and a second. Any more questions, discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Next, item 19, discuss possible action on notices to owners for donation of water line utility easements and notice agreement donate Texas CDBG 713076, Escondido Water Line Project and authorize county judge to sign it.
Judge, these are just required notices being with the grant. We've contacted both of these landowners, they both are amicable to donating those easements out there along US Highway 90 to bypass those areas there within the right of way where those utilities are. One's to Mr. Cameron and Mr. Espinoza, they own that property right there next to Mr. Matthews and then some lady out there right next to the, Ms. Gutierrez, see her as well. Whether she was very amicable to be able to have. We are going to provide them a water meter on that new line across of their property. And so these are just paperwork to accomplish that.
I make a motion to approve. There's a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Next, item 20, discuss possible action on schedule for the final public hearing for Texas CDBG 713129, published notice for same.
Judge, we'd like to publish that or schedule the meeting for April 25th, 2017 at 5:15 p.m. here in this room.
Okay. April 25th. Make a motion. There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, item 21, discuss possible action regarding surveillance equipment in lighting for Beverly County Library.
Judge, this is for surveillance cameras inside and out from the library and it seems that we might need additional lighting on the outside.
Well, something you go get a price for and then bring it back to the court and maybe take it out of the same funds that there's still left over there?
Yeah, we have a price from security.
Century?
Century Security. 14,000 or something. That's for the cameras inside and out.
And is that a?
I don't have the exact number.
Is it a good length?
It's just, this is.
This is just cameras, 30 cameras inside and out.
An engineer didn't think we'd ever need surveillance.
And he's never mentioned, it was never mentioned. And this, and included in this bid is panic buttons for the employees inside where they can carry up. Because we do have some people that are attracted to that type of facility.
Do, we just had a deal, there's 300 some odd thousand dollars minus 38,000, so we still have funds in it. I mean, if you think it's necessary, make a motion.
I think, I think it's very necessary. I don't have the exact figure, Judge.
Okay.
Is it gonna be more than, what'd you say?
You said 14, would it be?
17?
Yes, it would be more. It'd be less than 20.
Do 20. Let's go on.
I make the motion. It'd be less than 20,000.
Okay. Second.
There's a motion.
Authorize up to 20,000.
What was, what was the motion?
The motion is authorize him to spend up 20,000 for security and lighting.
Okay, but not, you're not entering any contracts, are you? No contracts?
No.
Okay. Cause we have one for Sentry, I don't know, cause that's further down in the.
The new security systems for Sentry Security.
Sentry Security.
Okay.
So it'd be an amended of an existing.
Amendment.
Well, it just seems like we keep adding to it.
Confused, don't confuse, sorry.
The, to install the new security system, around 14,000 dollars.
That doesn't include the monitoring.
That does not include the monitoring.
There's no contract back there right now.
No.
No, but we were providing a contract and that contract's gonna cover what? Is this what, it's gonna cover this?
No, it was their, it was their duty that they were doing before, which was basically driving around and I think they had a monitor inside.
So this contract is countywide?
No, that's just for the library. Other buildings have other contracts with Sentry.
Okay, well, it doesn't cover what Commissioner Wardlaw was talking about. So why are we entering into the contract?
I think this should be different from that contract. Correct?
That was a renowned, of an ongoing service.
With the library.
Right, and then last month, the court decided to cancel that because there would be some adjustments done to the library.
So.
We're talking just construction.
So this contract does, we don't have to work with?
No, I think we just offer a new one to incorporate.
The only dollar amounts that we're talking about, I know it's gonna be for installation of equipment. And then they'd have to come back and give us a contract.
Lighting and cameras.
Okay, thank you.
And it may not change, so.
All right, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, item 22, discuss possible action on the need to complete meets and bounce survey for proposed site assembly of passages, booster station, Texas CDBG 7216075, and take actions necessary to implement this process.
Judge, I got a question. I mean, if I'm just paying for this out of my own budget, do I need to take action for the? Is there a grant? The, what we did is, we received grant money, but I believe the last go around, even with the pipe and everything else, we'd used up all the grant money. As a matter of fact, on one of the grants, we were actually taking out fire hydrants. That way we would come within the grant because we actually had fire hydrants from one of the other, we had extra fire hydrants.
This is a piece of property, you may recall way back there when Commissioner Owens did the Paysona Road project, there was some concern way up there on the north end that maybe due to the elevation, those people up there maybe would not receive adequate water pressure.
And it wasn't so much theirs, it was for the fire hydrant at the end of the road, at the very end of the road.
Yeah.
So you put a booster pump? We put it, yeah, we basically put in a booster pump, but the property.
Well, we hadn't put the booster pump in. That hadn't been done. None of that's been done. The water line, the water lines in, but this existing project retains part of that, okay?
One of the deals was, is that piece of property, it's right there on the corner where Old Hamilton and Hamilton, it's just that one corner, just to get it surveyed, and that was it. But there's no money within the grant. So I'm just saying, you don't pay for it. Yeah, you're paying for it.
We just wanna make sure that the improvements are put on the correct place.
So we don't need to go on that?
No.
Thank you, Paul.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next, discuss possible action on the lease agreement between Beverly County and Del Rio Road for the use of Beverly County Fairgrounds for Independence Day rodeo.
Motion to approve and have the judge decide.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, we have a discuss possible action on the lease agreement between Beverly County and Portastamia family to benefit team golfing for the use of Beverly County Fairgrounds.
Motion to approve and have the judge decide. And we doing a charge for this?
Yes, we are.
And they were talking about the smaller arena. How much is the charge? Uh huh? How much is the charge? Two seventy. I just, I personally would think that we would go ahead and charge them. We don't wanna get in the habit of just going through and, because we approved the benefit the other day that we charged them also for another lady who was having some cancer, or had cancer and they were going through it. And I mean, it'd be taken care of, it's just. I don't think the court needs to go down the road. I like it, it's 250 for the smaller.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second. Second, okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, item 25, discuss possible action on approval and use of technology account for Judge Posford, fifth in June, training provided by TAC. Payment made to the JP Technology Account CCP Art 102.0173. Estimate cost $1,298.17.
Motion to approve, there's money in this account. There's a budget that goes through this account.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, item 26, discuss possible action for the pool of the use of technology funds for training in June for technology-based training programs for life tech association counties. Training includes registration meals, mileage, and hotel, $1,248.96. Payment made to, made from JP number four technology fund according to CCP Art 102.0173.
Motion to approve, there's money in that budget.
There's a motion and a second. Okay, any discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, item 27, discuss possible action on the budget amendment to transfer of $1,800 from JP four of the supply part 1111-1209-00-16 for JP Cavell and train account number 11111, 12090016200.
Motion to approve.
Okay.
If we just paying for it out of the other account, why are we transferring out of regular budget?
Because we are short in our, in our regular budget. The training we're going to in June, that is, has to do a lot with the technology training. And the regular budget, we're running low. And we still have the clerk's legislative updates that's coming up in May. And then we, I have another one in June. And so if I don't transfer, I'm gonna be short.
That's there.
That's a good reason.
There's a motion, I need a motion first. A second. Any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. All right, next, item 28, discuss possible action regarding the bids received with engineers letter of recommendation received, Texas CDBG 7115499, material only for assembly of passages, water line, I can authorize county judge to sign it, materials contract with HD Supply.
That is the only one submitted, huh?
That's correct.
Did they look, the prices, they look pretty much in line with everything that's been done as far as size of pipe and stuff on other contracts?
That is correct, yes.
Motion to give authorization of judge, second.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, item 29, discuss possible action regarding the statements of qualification received for land surveying service with possible contract we award for meets and bounce surveying of two required easements, Texas CDBG 713076, Escondido Water Line Project.
Absolutely.
Move, I need a second.
Second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0.
And that is KRC?
All right, next, item 30, discuss possible action regarding authorizing the use of that, Amistad Consulting Survey Company and city-owned land located Broadband Street adjacent to Central Cemetery.
Move, absolutely.
Okay, there's a motion already?
Okay, second.
Second.
Where are you getting the money?
Hopefully, we can get some from the city. I think we're gonna have to pay for it, maybe we can get.
When we're authorizing the survey, where are we getting the money? And there has, we have to be able to get the money from somewhere. Are we just gonna get out whatever, huh? We're just gonna get it out of contingency, I mean, it needs to be part of the motion, that way it gets it done.
It is meal. Hey, take it out of mine, okay? Maybe we can get some in kind from the city. We'll meet with them tomorrow.
Yeah, we'll go meet with them tomorrow.
Would that require an MOU?
Not if they're gonna help clean, they're just cleaning up trash.
I thought they were collecting money.
Right.
I think he's talking about.
Is there a, is there a in kind? In other words, we're gonna have to pay for it.
That's your motion. You made the motion.
It's a good thing you're rich.
Motion to approve and, Amistad Consulting out of a precinct warrant for any budget.
You what? Motion to approve affair precinct warrant. Second exists?
A second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, nobody opposed, 5-0.
You didn't even give them a chance to hang themselves. You hung them both.
Okay, item 31, discuss possible action regarding the payment of executed purchases not defined with current purchasing policy.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. Okay. Okay, any discussion?
List is getting short.
If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, thank you. Discuss a possible action regarding the 63rd District Court copier service contract?
They currently have, they're getting out of a 60-month contract that was $221.20 a month. And the new one is for 36 months, $275.80 per month.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second, any more questions?
Is it an actual contract?
Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, discuss possible action regarding the library's copier maintenance service contract?
This copier was purchased with bond money for that amount that's on there. I'm just coming to the court for the maintenance part of it.
Okay.
Motion to approve.
There's a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, thank you. All right, next, we have discuss possible action on certification on following items, Sterling gravel truck, $45,896.73, and a Kaufman truck deck.
Motion to approve, second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Not all those in, all those indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Item 35, discuss possible action on recommendation from RFQ Selection Committee to award contract to selected firm, private professional architectural and engineering service for development on the sports complex?
There was four, I'm sorry, there was three professional service contractors that submitted their qualifications, that was LPA Company, Denin Bond, and DPA. The score, the evaluators were Dutch, my best, Mike Schumman, Elton, Matt Weingard, and myself. The recommendation, or the highest score was Denin Bond.
Where'd you have it?
Of course you.
I don't have one.
I did.
It's in the cashman.
It was in that whole packet, packaging.
I got my glasses on, Judge. I'll make a motion to approve Denin Bond and to authorize, I need to negotiate a contract. Who do you want? Sit down and negotiate a contract. It's the three of you, I mean, who was on the committee?
Yeah.
All of us.
The judge, the commissioner.
Well, at least the judge and the commissioner.
The attorney.
There were. I'll make a motion to approve Denin Bond and authorize me and the judge to sit down and negotiate a contract to bring it back before the court.
Second. There's a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, 5-0. Next, item 36, discuss possible action regarding the bids received for the structural cable, cable and systems round 2017, multiple sites.
We had four bidders. INET Security and Surveillance Incorporated, Major Inc., DVA RX Technology, Advanced Connections, and Sentry Security Services. The bids were as follows, $149,380.61 for INET, $95,604 for Major Inc., $147,163 for Advanced Connections, and Sentry Security bided $89,841.55. The only inconsistency or irregularity was that Sentry Security did not provide proof of insurance. of insurance at the time of the bid, which was required. But the court has the ability to waive that. He has provided many of his insurance, uh, as soon as I made them aware that it was missing.
The days are, the days are way off. The days, yeah. I, I don't know how, everybody's above one ninety-six and he comes in at sixty.
Do you have a recommendation, or?
I'd use those four bids, uh, they all did a walkthrough except that one, uh, boy.
Uh, I think it was our, Major Inc., RX.
Yeah.
Okay, but out of these bids, you don't have a recommendation?
Well. As a bid, we, we, the court does have the option to go with a missed value. It's normally low bid.
He just asked you a simple question.
I, I.
Did you have a recommendation? Do you have a recommendation after looking at it? I have concerns about sixty days and everybody else is at two forty.
I believe, I don't wanna speak for Mr. Moreno, but I do have a concern on the time.
Do you have, out of these people, do you have somebody that you think can handle this job correctly?
ACI is probably being most qualified.
ACI. They're a hundred and forty-seven thousand. They're taking a hundred and ninety-six days to do. And how much money do we set aside for this?
Four hundred and some odd thousand dollars altogether, four hundred and twenty-six.
Well.
Two hundred. Two hundred dollars or two hundred thousand?
Two hundred dollars.
Two hundred dollars.
Well, it's in our near state.
I'll make a motion to approve Advanced Connections Inc.
There's a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second, any more discussion? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Item thirty-eight, discuss possible action regarding authorization to option one and/or dispose of the following road equipment maintainer precinct one, road effect and steel wheel roller precinct one.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, need a second? Or a second? I'm sorry. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, nobody opposed, five zero. Next, item thirty-nine, discuss possible action regarding the request from County Library to purchase items listed on provided document and to use bond money for payment.
Worst.
You can borrow it. I didn't get none of that. I, I went from twenty-six to item forty-two.
Yeah, me too.
I know, yeah, right, there's no problem, right? How much is the total? Everybody add it up.
I got it late, so I did not have an opportunity to add it up.
Do you have a copy or no?
I do not.
There, come here, this, it's not totally booked.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, need a second? Need a second in that?
I'll second.
Second, any more discussion, questions? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, thank you, five zero.
Out of the, uh, the bond money?
We had three hundred and some odd thousand dollars left. Is that all punched in one line?
Contingency.
Is that correct, Mr.?
It's pretty much all contingency, right? On the balance, on the library bonds?
No, contingency in the.
In the bond.
In, in the, in the bond, not in our, not in our general, yeah.
Uh, I don't know, Mr. Palio, did you get an amount on that, sir?
I'm gonna drop you it.
So you're testing the amount.
He's an attorney, he should know better than to say yes.
Four thousand, four hundred and thirty-one dollars and thirty cents.
Okay, there was a motion.
Motion and a second. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item forty, discuss possible action on authorizing and, and to authorize county to save renewal application for tech, our NP for coverage on buildings and contents.
Thank you, Judge.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion, need a second?
You're good, second.
Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item forty-one, discuss possible action regarding clarification of our department role in the county projects relating to permits issued by our office.
Thank you, Judge. Initially, I did not put this, uh, this item on the agenda as an action item.
Okay.
Uh, it was simply because, uh, with the exception of Anna Markowski Smith, myself, and Commissioner Nettleton, uh, nobody else sitting on this court is familiar with the creation of the Risk Management Department. Uh, and I'll be as brief as I can, because I only have a long agenda, but still, I think it's important that the commissioners understand what risk management stands for and how it was created. Uh, in two thousand and three, I was given the task of placing, uh, coverage with Texas Association of Counties for many coverages, buildings, contents, and also liability, uh, coverages. And, uh, this, this I was able to accomplish. There was also a necessary, a necessity for an appointment as a pool coordinator, uh, pool coordinator in the Texas Association of Counties, the risk management pool to deal with one particular individual. And I was appointed to be that individual, and that occurred in two thousand and four, May of two thousand and four. At the same time, as part of the placing the coverage with Texas Association of Counties, it required a risk management officer. And, uh, I was also appointed risk management officer. That was county court order, uh, number zero four one four six.
Just a question, what item are we on? Because it's, if we're on item forty-one, it says, discussion on possible action regarding clarification of our department role in county projects in relating to permits.
This is what I'm trying to do, Commissioner.
What are permits?
Explain what our, what our role is and how this department was created. Uh, and I'll be, I'll be as brief as I can. Uh, so there was a risk management department created, and with this is the, the, as you look at your bike, you'll see it says risk management department. Uh, what occurred was I had originally been hired as assistant health inspector. Dr. Martinez was the health inspector. There were two budgets, risk management department and health department. With Dr. Martinez's passing, the court then went ahead and, uh, I assumed the duties of, of, uh, health inspector. And of course, along with that, there were the job description of health inspector, because people said, well, why is the health inspector involved in this? Because the health inspector serves as the flood plains administrator, he serves as the county planner, he serves as the designated representative, he serves as the county enforcement officer, and, uh, also the Amistad land use owner official. So all those are incorporated, there is one department, and that department is Risk Management Department.
Commissioner Owens, I think we talked about this last budget season, about, uh, breaking up the departments, because there were too many together.
Okay, so I'm gonna go on now. Because if your permits, if we're talking about permits.
Yes, we're talking about.
You have an example, you, you want us to clarify your role.
The, the, the permits, no, I'm not, I didn't ask for any clarification of anything. The county.
Well, that's, that's, that's what it says here.
I, I know, and that was, uh, no. I did not ask this to be a, a, an agenda, an action item. I just wanted to appear before the court and make the statement that I just made, and then go on and state what permits are pertinent and not pertinent to county projects. I didn't ask for any action item.
Well, then that would have been a good memo to the court.
Ma'am.
If it wasn't an action item, it would have been a good memo to the court.
Well, uh, you, you requested that it be on the agenda as an action item, and that's fine, I have no problem.
Please continue.
I'm not requesting action. Here, here's basically the permits that we have in, in that, that, that our office, the Office of Risk Management Incorporated, was to have a county health inspector's office, uh, what we, what we issued. Uh, flood, uh, there's a flood damage prevention order that was passed by, with the court in two thousand and nine that requires any type of excavation or development in a flood plain, one hundred year flood plain, that a permit be obtained from our office. That would apply to a county project as well as any other project, with the exception of possibly waiving the fee. Uh, in the Amistad land use zone area, there would be building permits required, uh, once again, that would be only in that area as building permits are required by the federal government to build the twenty-seven million dollar border patrol station from our office as well as the customs office. In the rest of the county, there is no, uh, building permit required from any project, whether it be county or not. Uh, also, uh, the, the one that, that is really, uh, that is, I administer as health inspector is under the OSSF onsite sewage facility program. And that program, uh, is a program that we administer, the county is authorized agent to TCEQ, and I as designated representative and the county health inspector oversee. And that project, uh, that though, if any time that there is an onsite sewage facility anywhere in the county installed on any project, whether it be county or private, then our office has, uh, will assist in obtaining the permit, but it's necessary. There is no exemption on that, whether it's just because it might be a county office. Uh, those are basically the, uh, the permits that, that, uh, our office issues, there's one other, and our, our, it, the other permit that we issue throughout the unincorporated area of the county is, uh, restaurant establishment permits, food, uh, operating permits for mobile units. That is only in the unincorporated area of the county, uh, that does not apply to the Belverde County fairgrounds, because they are inside the city limits, and the city has an ordinance in place that covers, uh, that, uh, operation. Uh, in trying to remain brief, I just wanted to share with the court, if I may, uh, some information that I came by that I think is very important. This information is part of the labor code, total five, uh, workers' compensation, uh, and goes on to say that a governmental entity enters into a building or construction contract shall require the contract with the verifying writing that they have workers' comp. I'm sure, I'll just give you all a copy of this. This is, uh, I'm bringing this up in, in realm of being risk management. The risk, the risk management officer is working closely in conjunction with human resource to provide training, bring in training, uh, the object being to try and cut down on risk within the county. And I thank you very much for your time.
Hey, a contractor has to verify in writing, and that, and so is that presented through the court?
Well, what should be done, and I think this is one of the reasons he's bringing it up. I'd hired a file layer that was supposed to have insurance, uh, workbench comp and general liability. Now that gets that company bringing this up. As soon as we found out that the guy didn't, had not presented his workbench comp, the individual was terminated.
And typically, the way we've done it in the past, and I don't know if the process continues, is if there's, um, if it goes through the purchasing department, that's part of the requirement. And if there's a contract, we ensure that that's attached.
And, and it was one of those deals that the guy was hired, the guy was supposed to, was, and I, I saw a copy of the insurance, and he was supposed to turn it in, he did not turn it in, at the point that we figured out that that insurance was not turned in, the individual was terminated. And, and that wouldn't be their fault, that would have been my fault, because I should have followed through and, and had him bring it in. And I think that's the reason that Roger's bringing this up.
Who did you present it to?
Present it to them and the HR, just to make sure that we have it on file.
You are, HR.
But Roy's been really good about keeping up with that.
No, he has, and this one here just sort of, uh, it fell through the crack, the guy, I saw the insurance, uh, he was supposed to give us a copy back, his insurance company was supposed to get us one, he didn't, and at the point that we looked at it again, and it was not there, we terminated it.
So you need that.
That's all I have, Mr. Any question?
We need the workers' comp, um, proof in order to issue a permit?
No, there is no, there is no, there, there is no, uh, permit required for workers' comp, however, it is something that the risk management.
What we've done in the past with, with individuals that have worked for the county, not only did they turn us in an insurance, an insurance certificate showing their liabilities, but also on the bottom, they have listed us as additional insurer, and within that form, it has the general liability, liability, and it shows which company they have bought their workbench comp through, and it's all on one certificate.
But it has nothing to do with permits.
It, it has nothing to do with permits.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr.
You may. Thank you, just brought it up, because you had a gotcha moment.
Wait, it has nothing to do with permits?
Okay, next, item forty-two, discuss possible action regarding verification by County Judge Affairman Des, on submission of annual support to Texas State Library and Archives Commission.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second, any more discussion? If not, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, item forty-three, discuss possible action authorizing to accept railroad ties from.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second, any discussion? Not all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item forty-four, discuss possible action authorizing the use of the north lawn of Belverde County Courthouse for following law.
Second.
There's a motion, second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Commissioner, uh, brief, I mean, Commissioner Judge briefly, um, item forty-four is a very appropriate item, and I just wanna make sure everybody knows that these items should come to the court, because if somebody uses the lawn, there's some liability, we have property damage potential, so sometimes people say, yeah, go ahead and use the lawn, but it needs to come through the court.
Right. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody. All right, next, discuss possible action on authorizing acceptance donation of two hundred dollars from VFW that they would use for uniforms.
Motion to approve, second.
Uh, there's a second. Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, discuss possible action on authorizing the, County Judge Two accepts interlocal agreement between Belverde County and Terrold County, Texas. The agreement is to provide housing and care for certain inmates incarcerated and to be incarcerated in Belverde County residential facility. Any motion for that?
I move.
So move, need a second?
Second.
Second.
So, sorry.
No, this is a renewal.
Okay.
This is a, we've had this contract about three, four years now.
Okay, okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
I go, who signed this thing? Who, who signed this one? Should be the judge, right?
Judge, Judge, thanks for the call.
Next, item forty-seven, discuss possible action with authorizing Belverde County Judge Affairman Des to accept interlocal agreement between Belverde County and Savala County. This agreement is to provide housing and care for certain inmates incarcerated or to be incarcerated in Belverde County. So move.
It's the same thing as the one.
Okay, need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Next, item forty-eight, discuss possible action on corporate agreement between National Park Service and Belverde County Sheriff's Office.
Motion to approve.
There's a motion and a second, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item forty-nine, discuss possible action regarding the purchase of two and a half ton four-by-four truck to be used for service truck.
He has this money on the budget?
No, I asked him to put this on the agenda. Last fire we had, there's issues with lots of flat tires, we don't have anything out there to work on them with, um, there is some funding left from the two thousand and thirteen tax note.
So is that a motion to get it out?
And so I will make a motion to authorize him to purchase this truck out of the, it was eighty-five hundred?
Seventy-five hundred.
Seventy-five hundred.
No, I mean, in the tax note. About eight thousand, I'll authorize for seventy-five hundred of that to be used out of that thirteenth or fourteenth tax note.
Thirteenth.
Thirteenth tax note to purchase this vehicle to be made into a service truck.
Second, there's a motion, a second.
Judge, do you, are we gonna put like air compressor?
Yeah, we're gonna need some additional funding.
Well, Phil, she asked me to do that.
He got bids for, he got pricing for additional funding that he's going to need for air compressors, impact wrenches and those. How much is it?
Yeah, I'm a glass of that.
I think it's around $3,000.
So, can we take?
$3,054.15.
So I will amend my motion. Is there, there's still money left in the 2016 contingency for the tax note?
The court discretion.
The court discretion tax.
Let's just do it all.
Okay, so I will authorize, I'll amend my motion to include the seventy-five hundred plus the $3,054.15 to come out of the 2013, and the remainder to come out of the 2016 contingency tax note.
Is that on the second? It's like you just didn't want to finish.
Yeah, that goes over.
Does this truck, does it have service bet on it?
Yes.
They have a number of trucks there. I looked at a bunch of them. They got some just like the one that we got from DOD that has a wedge boom on it. Same price, same trucks, only it's got a boom on it.
Oh, you need the boom to move the tires?
Yeah, that is about $250.
So then you get that, get the truck's chance at the price that we gave you.
Okay, there's a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, nobody, five zero.
I make a motion to table fifty on fifty-one?
I'd go.
Okay, there's a motion. Anybody want a second?
I'll second it for sake of discussion.
Okay, go ahead.
I wonder why we would table it. I'd rather deny it. And the reason is, we've done, we've had meetings since January. Every time that I go somewhere, it's the commissioners call, and I'm personally getting sick and tired of that shit. We've done our jobs. We've asked, we set up an individual to go talk to this person. You know, Judge, I think you've been more than clear on what is it that we need, and I'd much rather deny it that way we send a message as a court that you give us what we need so we can move forward. We're not moving forward. It's just like we're, you know, he brings us a little bit, and then it's our fault. He brings us a little bit more, and it's the same stuff you brought us in last time. He needs to understand what is it that we need, and we told him.
I'll pull my motion.
I'll make the motion to deny item fifty-one.
Second, or fifty?
Okay.
And fifty-one?
And fifty-one.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all opposed, okay, four, one. Thank you. All right, next, we have item fifty-two, the county president report.
Actually, looks like we got a lot of money in all our accounts, right? I mean, I don't know, a suggestion, and I know that we collect a little bit more every year, but maybe either quarterly or biennial or something if we could get. What would it look like the previous year? You want something like that?
Yes, comparison year to year.
Maybe quarterly or something like that, just so we can have an idea how we're doing. Well, if we can get it within our report, yeah, if you don't mind.
I can do that.
Yeah, because I mean, you're looking at the stuff, and I know we're going to collect a little bit more money because our budget goes up every year. So really, it's going to go up a little bit, but just, you know, it's just something to compare to.
No problem. We can definitely do that. There, speaking of those, and it's probably related more to y'all lobbying the third, but there's several bills that there in this session that will really change the way that we function in the county. There's one that will move the eight percent rollback rate to four percent. There is another one that will not allow us to move, like we currently do, when you have our effective rate versus our current rate. They will not allow us to do that anymore. You will have to go to your effective rates. There are several bills that have some hampering effect on the county's ability to function, in my opinion, going through this session. Whether it'll pass or not, but those are things that we need to look at.
I think most rural counties are fortunate, so I don't think it'll pass, but then again, I'll bring it up.
Well, Judge, in getting to that, we were talking about this last week. I mean, we have some values that are fixing to come online in the next two years that could really help us with our goals and our special projects, sports complex, judicial center, and everything else to where if the state legislature sort of ties our hands, you know, we could be looking at not being able to accomplish some of these projects. But if, these things that are coming online, these values that are coming online, we wouldn't need to go back to the taxpayer for any funds. It's just, it would be a matter of setting our goals, setting the special projects we need to get done, and it looks like we should be able to fund them a bit.
We have the wind farm, two new pipelines, and so on.
Yeah, and that's basically what most of the urban counties are dealing with. You hit them in the pocketbook there against it too.
Motion to approve.
Okay, there's a motion, need a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next one.
Correction on that, Matt. I was off a little bit. It's $6,881.
At least we know what your rule is.
All right, all right, Matt. Next, we have the.
Motion to approve. Are they all in compliance? Motion to approve.
There's a motion, Eddie, a second?
Second.
All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. All right, next, we have.
I'm only off fifty percent.
Next, we have the audit report.
Any question on the expense of budget?
Yep.
You want to do that?
How are we doing?
Ahead of schedule, under budget.
Ahead of scheduling spending or ahead of scheduling that saving?
There is a year-over-year cash for work.
Are we going to look at next month, a kind of where we're at overall? If we're going to need to do budget amendments for the end of the year?
Absolutely, and it will be based on this budget report because this one is our sixth month. So these figures won't change.
Motion to approve, I need a second?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. Next, item fifty-five, discuss possible action on the survey and testing fees.
These are the survey and testing fees that we had over at the illegal dumping site. So we did not discuss where we're going to pay them from.
Can we just discuss?
Yeah, he was going to pay from precinct one.
That was a different piece, so.
No, that was for the survey.
The survey, yeah.
Well, not the testing fee. I think.
How much was the testing?
They actually took it out of there, the testing fee.
What was the, what was the total amount on that?
$2,000 something, was it?
Oh, really? How much?
Was it $750 or $2,000? Was he looking at $200 or $2,000?
$2,000 something.
Twenty-two hundred.
Twenty-two hundred.
Yeah. Okay.
We don't have a lot of items in our stuff for that kind of stuff.
So I don't get any help on funding.
We ought to re-approve that one. Okay.
That's why we're going to do this budget amendment.
Okay, next, item fifty-six, discuss possible action on.
Okay, so let me just, here, I'm sorry. So now the testing is also coming out of precinct one? So the survey and the testing. Survey and testing.
The first motion dealt with just the survey.
Right.
So do you need to take action then on this one?
Okay.
And I believe they just did.
We haven't taken official action.
Okay, I need a motion for the testing fees.
To move.
So move, need a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anybody wants to say aye? Okay, five zero. Thank you. All right, next, discuss action on lead balances.
Okay, that can December. We pushed this off until May. May's approaching, so we decided what to do with our lead balances. On the ways that are open.
The vacation and all that kind of stuff. Where we at on it? What are the numbers? Has anybody tried to get them off or?
I don't have a report on it.
Yeah, we don't have a report on it, but we need to take action on what's going to happen at the end of May.
Well, in the last one, we said they have till May to get them off.
We're still staying with May.
So they haven't taken them off?
Okay.
I don't know. I'm asking, am I asking? Is they, they taking them off, or do we have any idea?
I have no idea who's taking what in what department, but what I know is the schedule to close in May.
So could you, could you get us a report? And get us a report to all the commissioners and the judges?
We gave everybody till May to do this.
Right, would the report matter? Would it matter if they're about $100 a one hour?
We need to look.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know what they are, I mean, yeah.
And if it's a large balance, then we're just going to extend.
Well, no, certainly. I mean, we did give everybody several months to do this.
You did.
Basically, they just want a report.
Okay.
At this time.
Yeah, I don't know what kind of number you're going to give. I was hoping that everybody kind of took care of that problem.
So, Matt, if there's any departments that have excess, would you send us a memo or something, just to be sure?
I'm going to work on a report, send it to the commissioners, and then I'll split it by departments and send it.
We did it till May 30th, right?
Correct.
So we still have a meeting in May, if y'all can, we can look at it, but everybody needs to get them off.
I didn't understand the way it was written, what it was for.
Well, it's discussion of possible action on lead balances. It's like, where are you leaving?
Well, I understand. I just didn't understand it. I was like.
Yeah, what is it?
All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
All right, let's step over to the amendment, the denim. Discuss possible action approved payment for $27,254 floodplain. There's a motion, a second?
We have a document.
Second.
Second?
You're the one that goes through this.
Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody.
I don't think Jamie has an agenda.
Here.
Yes.
It's only one item.
But if they could just take a ten so she could write the month.
Okay.
NNF what?
NNF.
You got NNF, that's who did it, right?
Surveillance equipment for the library was.
Which one do we want?
Twenty-one. I just wanted a clarification. Where no more than $20,000 was to be spent?
Yes.
And was the vendor selected as well?
Well, for the surveillance, the lighting, I don't know what you're doing on the lighting.
Other than the lighting.
Yeah.
That is to include the acceptance of the.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Let's get, do we have a, executive session?
Oh, yes.
I will now go into executive session pursuant to Texas government code 551.071, print six, one, for instance. The 551.071, print two. Okay, is there any approval of this stuff, division plan?
Yes, I sure do, Your Honor. Thank you, sir. This is an amended class, Commissioner Precine, Commissioner Miller.
This is simply changing the name of the street. Motion to approve.
Motion, there's a second. Any questions? All those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody. Any certificates, complaints, okay? Want the report from local.
Move. Move again.
Second, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
All right.
Okay. Approval bill state?
We just have one. We have one from the Doro Nutrition Center. It was a grant that it was signed off on last year, but we just got the invoice in this budget year. In the past, it was taken out of contingency. So we need to know what would you guys like it taken out of this year?
They just now billed us for something we did last year?
Yeah, they just got the invoice. Yes, it was for February 16th through January 17th.
What did you?
It's $2,000.
That's a grant to say give the.
$2,087.
It's the same thing over and over again. We just never have set up an actual line item for it. It's always been taken out of contingency.
Motion to approve and add this out of contingency.
Need a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, all those in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, all those opposed, nobody, five zero. elected official comments?
They had that autism, the barbecue and everything, cook-off, and then the 5K run. I think, well, this is the most amount of teams that they'd had, other than the Toyota cook-off. They had 53 teams. And some pretty big names actually showed up, and they wanted to thank the court. They were real thankful for everything the court had done for them. Understood, Matt.
I've got a report here to make on the survey that was done on the, my dump at the cemetery, at the San Felipe Cemetery. Mr. Cerny had it tested, and the environmental consultant came and tested, and it was negative on asbestos.
Good job, Robert.
Okay, do we need to?
Also in the water.
Do we need to put a plaque that says my team? Taking up collections for the sign.
Whoa, don't make that sign.
All right, next, the last one is a judge's comments, and I just want to make comment. I want to thank the commissioners' court and all the staff. I don't know if some of you know it, but it's in the website. The commissioner's also got it. We got selected by the Texas County Progress as one of the best budget forms, not the number wise, but the way we do the budget throughout the state, and they're going to use it as a, as a probably post, post, app to with the rest of the counties, how to set up a county budget. Not just the numbers, but the goals and all the things that go with it, mission statements. And they, like I said, we were, we were selected from all the budgets in the state of Texas, and I'm very proud of the commission's court and the staff to help us put that budget together, and I applaud you for it. Thank you very much. Anybody else? If not, then this means a very.